Next up is a revision to the plastic bag. Let's push it.
Yes, so what I tried to do is I went back and listened to the discussion because I think there are a lot of points that were raised. And I'm hoping that I accomplished what it looked like you guys had landed on or ended on. But really, this, I think, because I think it's easier to work from something that's end writing and make edits than just to continue to talk about it. So before you is an ordinance to amend chapter 5.69, which is known as the plastic bag ordinance. And what I've done is add an exclusion to the charge for plastic bags for certain instances. So that's the only change that has been made. And you can see that highlighted, lines 81 through 86. And again, this was just my attempt to summarize what I think you had discussed, but we can make changes, anything that you would like.
That's literally, I think that's almost verbatim from the things you said. And it covered it really well. It could change. That's what I wanted to say.
And so I will also just point out, I did not change the shall to in may because I think there was some discussion regarding the charge. And it was my understanding that you wanted the charge, that it needed to be a shall unless it meant the specific exception.
I want to ask, recently, I learned that, I think it's in a couple of months or less than a year, that the state of Maryland is doing the same ordinance. I wanted to compare, but there's no point in us changing this if in fact the state of Maryland says that the charge is the same sense for a bag. If that's the point, because I think we heard that.
I've heard that they're going to be doing the ordinance, but I don't.
It's just enforcing the bag, but not enforcing the charge.
Right. The charge, I don't think the charge.
Yeah, it's just that I did not sell. I'd like to.
Does state law supersede if Maryland passes?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I would like to get a copy of what they do plan to pass before we really do any more corrections or any more discussions like that, do a compare and contrast, to make sure that, you know, when they pass this, then we're.
I think this would be more setting the example for what they would probably want to look at us, or us looking at them.
The state is looking at with all the different towns and cities around the state.
Right.
There's different people are doing some different things.
I think putting this in there.
It'll be whenever they drop the legislature.
What on the... There's a draft of this.
I have not seen it, but I could locate it. Dylan, did you? Have you seen it? Okay. Between the two of us, we will locate it.
And just to do a compare and contrast, I would really take just the final deals and then make it more confusing that we passed this, but then just three or four months later, the state passes something that supersedes that, and we have to reverse whatever we gave it.
You're looking at probably six months from now. It's not, it's not, you're looking at about six months down.
Even when it's January.
Yeah, at the earliest.
Also, if they pass a stiffer law, this law, we have to go with it. So the only thing they could do is make it less than ours, but I don't think there's much to answer that, in my opinion.
And see what the state does later on because it won't be right, it won't be, it's not correct right now, which is what the state is going to do. And how, from what I understood, it was just that they're most plastic bag state.
Any questions or comments? Are you, you have consensus to do this forward?
Yes.
To the F C.
I will, for just everyone's identification, though, find it and forward it to you two to have it.
Just real quick, I'm asking for a runaway. If this on the agenda Monday, and then there's a second reading, it would happen, there is still a public campaign that would need to happen, we have to inform people, if any changes to that happen, we want to. Make sure people answer this, not to be back to. If you have a wait, wait a second, it's going on. So we should get the best. Worse rollout.
So with that, the next one is the Bird scooter follow-up.
I think you're just within this last week, because I was trying to find out how anyone under 18 is able to get on the scooters. And some people are like overusing their credit card. Apparently, they are circumventing that with a cash app card. And somehow, somehow, that's, I just don't want to bring up the fact that, you know, in District 5 anyway, there's a lot of people who are concerned that they're laying on sidewalks, in yards, which I've seen personally. And when they're laying in the sidewalks, they do obstruct, you know, people who will walk on their dogs, baby's trollers, anyone with a wheelchair. And the other thing is, we do have this, you know, the under 18 crowd still utilizing this, circumventing whatever the rule is. And I just wanted just to bring it up again, that I just have concerns with the Bird scooters.
Sure. Knowing that Bird scooter operates as a business here locally, from a regulatory stance, we have the ability to regulate if it exists, it don't exist right now, we have no regulation there. That says you cannot have it. From an enforcement standpoint of underage users, there is some tactics that can be used that is difficult, chasing people down on scooters, just like chasing down dirt bikes. There is incentives and there is marketing and helping people understand proper ways to park, where they need to go, that there's certain things that we can do to ramp up. We can lean on our partners at Bird to have them, if there's any resources or opportunities to help further education on what this looks like, so it's not just us going at it alone. I just want to make sure, know what your ask is, that you're asking us to look for harsher enforcement, more education around it, better understanding if we want to have this as an enterprise with a city.
I think my thing is, is when those scooters go off, you could be riding, I could be riding in here across the street, and that scooter goes off, it stops. They're heavy. They are very, very heavy. I mean, to the point where I tried to pick one up, and I couldn't do it. I wasn't pulling my back out. They're heavy, so that's why people are leaving them in different places, because when they cut off, they're off. A lot of the kids, now, I'm going to be perfectly honest, I haven't seen as many young people riding them as it was in the beginning, because to me, it was a fad. And everybody was just enjoying it. Now, I do see some riding, but not as many as it was last year. Because I was very upset about it, and I'm very, I was very upset about the juveniles that are riding and how they were able to do it, and I found out too. Cash app cards and other little cards that you can get offline and put money on, money cards. So the parents don't know that their kids are riding this, because I've talked to several parents, and they weren't aware that their kids were on here because their kids were supposed to be one place and doing something else. We all know how that goes. Another thing, I actually saw a parent last year right in front of the courthouse. Get up, use a car, five young men. And I know they weren't a big. So, I mean, no matter how you do this, it's going to infringe on somebody. Law enforcement, the same thing with curfews and everything else. How do you choose whether somebody is really underage? Because some of these 18-year-olds now look like 15-year-olds, and the 15-year-olds look like the 21-year-olds. So it's kind of like up in the air with that. So we have to be cautious with that as well. So my thing is, just finding somewhere in different areas, like I said, they may crash anywhere. Wherever they pick them up the most is where we should have some kind of racks or something to put them in, but not on sidewalks, not in the streets, not in your driveway, or things of that sort. We should ask Bird to facilitate. Now, I do see the Bird, somebody's hired, contracted them to pick them up, and they do pick them up. But if we could have some kind of facility where, in certain areas, where they could put these instead of having them, you know, laying on sidewalks, laying in the street, laying behind someone's car, vehicle, whatever, I don't know if that'd even work. But what has worked is us making, stating the fact that we were concerned about the Bird scooters. And that has, you know, made a great issue and has brought about some changes with the Bird scooter. And as I said, that first year or two, it was a fad. It was just, it was just exciting about doing something, and they did it. So I just, the only thing I can say right now is, just let's see if we could get information out to the city, the parents, to whoever. And let's see if Bird would like to, because, and ask them how they do it and they obviously.
That's what I was going to bring up, is that Bird recently lost its contract with Baltimore because they were violating regulations. We don't have any regulations. If we take a look at what some other cities have done, the regulations could be confused because at the end, it's, it's just Bird. They have two other companies in Baltimore that provide these scooters, and they were able to be implemented only by Bird. So I'm wondering if it's a regulation. Now, they have a transportation department, things like that, that really.
We can take a peek at.
Yeah.
Any other comments before I come to that? We can take a look at what Baltimore does. I've heard a presentation from Baltimore representatives. They charge a pretty high licensing fee there. It's pretty, it was a pretty competitive marketplace for a while, so they're a bit enforcing strong regulations. Bird has what they call nests. That's where they put the scooters. They typically stickers are grabbing spaces rather than structure racks, so we could look at getting some food materials, put down some places that's in the high-traffic areas. I'll reach out to our contacts at Bird, the representatives, and see what are some marketing strategies that are going to be used in other areas. We'll go back to your group.
Well, if they're not going to comply, then we need to just ban it. I mean, another good for people, for transportation, for older people, and I've seen older people going, working wherever they want to. But if they're not going to, if Bird is not going to work with the city, then we have to do, we have to do something to make that good.
And we'll take the other regulations.
Any other questions or comments?
Just whatever, Andy, people together, I'd like to.
That is the last item. At this time, we'll go to administration.
Yeah, good evening, early evening. Tomorrow morning at Helen's Cafe, you can have coffee with the mayor, and you can come and tell me what's on your mind. It'll be from 8:00 till 10:00. Yep, right around the corner. And as always, if you can, please donate blood. And Angela will add to that, I'm sure. And this morning, I had a very enjoyable time at East Falls, very school-welcome, the kids' bank. It was a hoot. It was really, really good. However, I got, right after I got out of the, out of that area, I was following a school bus. And the yellow lights went on the school bus, and it was a two-lane road. And the bus driver put his brakes on after the yellow lights, and then put the stop sign out, and a truck went by the school bus about 30 miles an hour. Now, luckily, the school was on the right-hand side, and the kids didn't have to cross. I don't know if anybody saw it, but there was an article last night, I believe it was on ABC News, about the mother whose two kids were crossing the street in front of the bus with the stop sign out, and both of them were killed. Please make sure that you obey, if there's any law that should be obeyed, that's the one. So please spread the word. We don't want to lose any of our little ones. So, thank you.
What's going on here? Megan Allen, how are you doing today?
Nothing really, as of the, on my end, just again, reiterating just statements. I made a post about this as well. Be cautious while you're out on the road. Not only are the buses there, we're sitting a lot more pedestrians, a lot smaller pedestrians. So please be mindful when you drive on, especially during the early hours when the kids are walking to school. And then additionally, just I've been out in the community, doing some door knocking, connecting with our constituents and getting some feedback, and really looking forward to sort of conversations that are. Funny to speak, it's been a pretty, just getting geared up for school, and I wish my godsons off, and it was really nice to be them. So that's really been a good focus for my.
How was your first day at school?
Fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you. We need to tell the story on. Baltimore's being a little high because tomorrow. So my first day.
Oh, you would love it. That's adorable. It'd be amazing.
No, it was absolutely wonderful. But we're prepared. We're prepared for our space and excited for the new school year. And I did, I was a honorary captain Friday night for the Y High football team along with three other staff. Their staff can come out and volunteer, be honorary captains. We walk out with football teams, and then they can either go to the other team that we stand behind them to show support, that we're there for them. There was this Swedish young man on the sidewalk, and as we started walking, he grabbed my hand, and was walking and holding my hand across the field. And I just, I just said, you know what, these are the moments where you just know you love these children. You just love them. He was such a pleasant young man. Anyway, yes, donate blood. And in addition to blood, I'm going to be talking more about vestibular disorders as we get more and more into the fall. Balance disorder, and it impacts millions of people, and it's really misunderstood. But I'll be talking more about that. But definitely donate blood. I actually have an appointment to donate blood. Oh goodness, I forget it's me. Something like that. So I'll be giving my, my point. And it's very important, if you have a chance to save a life, that's probably the easiest thing you can do. Someone have to vote up?
Jackson?
Well, I had an awesome weekend. Michelle was with me. We took a van load of young people's van and carmen. Some of you took Helen's pond this weekend. It was awesome. It was just awesome. We had a cookout. They swam, they had so much fun, and they were the best and the most well-behaved young people that I've seen in a long, long time. I'm telling you, they were very well behaved. When we got back to our destination, we got home, I was so amazed at the kids giving me hugs and thanking me so much for giving them something that maybe their parents couldn't do for the summer because either they're constantly working or didn't have the funds to do. I thank you, Michelle, for attending and coming with us and purchasing some goodies for the kids. I mean, it was an awesome time. I mean, I couldn't have had a better time. We didn't have to say one word to any of those young people. They were very loving us. Nothing. I made the plan straight from our, my apartment. I let them know, we're not having any problems, you follow orders, you do whatever you need to do, and they did. Yes, thanks. I thank the parents of the young people who I'm allowing their kids to go, and I thank all my help, because I can't do this by myself. I thank everyone for the donation, because that helped us fund the trip. And there are more youth activities coming, and I do want to reiterate, the Voices of Democracy, DFW, statewide and local, the Voice of Democracy and the Patriots Pin. If you have children from grade six to eight and nine to 12, please get in touch with me. This is money. I was just in a video with one of the young men from Tennessee, won $35,000. So please, don't hesitate to get your youth involved in this, because there's money, there's scholarships and everything. And I will be listing more events that are coming on. We have a trunk and treat that will be October the 31st, and there's some other things that are going to take place. We're going to do a tutoring at the DFW on Mondays and Tuesdays starting October the 9th, for everyone that needs to be tutored, because that was one of the things that the kids, the young youth say. They need help. They really need help. So what can we do to help them in any way we can? So we'll be discussing more things at our tutoring session, and I thank you all for giving me this time.
And Mrs. Gregory?
I just wanted to thank April for allowing me to come along on Saturday. It was a lot of fun. The kids were incredibly well behaved. It was an absolutely beautiful day. The weather could have been more perfect. It wasn't this hot, sticky stuff, it was beautiful, just perfect weather. The kids had a blast at Helen's Pond, both at the little picnic we had, and also going swimming and playing in the water. They had a blast. They really, they were really good kids. I was really happy to be able to help out with that. I just want to reiterate for folks who are downtown, if you need the info, do Downtown and Gas, their number is 833-WNSBY. I'm going to post a flyer. There's a QR code that you can just scan with your phone, and it will give you all the info. I know it's on the Downtown Salisbury Facebook page, all that stuff, so I just want to get that information out again, just in case I made a mistake earlier. I get to have the last word on council president's last meeting? That's interesting. So that will be first, we're going to be coming here to this new building. I had an idea, and unfortunately, that idea is not going to totally come to fruition, but the council, the rest of council and I discussed it, and we got you a shiny new gavel because this one has been worn down a bit.
That one is, is a bit old.
And unfortunately, you're not going to be able to use it, but we wanted you to remember.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sure you don't. I think it needs, it needs more likely to use it.
Wow. Thank you.
Mr. Bono, I would suggest you not use that at all.
Yes, no.
No, I, I would probably take this to my daughter's.
No, I think it needs to get some water out of the baby, but.
Yeah, that's, that's Friday, so, so, thank you. Almost eight years we've all been together, and this has been a great honor, and going to miss you all, but I'm still going to be around. And I'm very proud of everything we've accomplished over the last eight years.
Oh, no, I'm going to date. I'm going to visit.
So, but yeah, I'm, I'm excited about the new opportunity, excited to finally retire from Walmart, no more Black Friday, there's Christmas season to have to worry about, so.
Oh, you're going to miss that, aren't you?
Oh, no, 5:00 AM on Black Friday, I'll be, I'll be dead asleep. But thank you all, thank you for this, thank you for your friendships, your advice along the ways and conversations that we've had on and off the record. Appreciate everybody. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned, and we will be going into a special meeting. And at this time, I would like to call September 5, 2023, special meeting to order. I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda for the special meeting.
Call the motion. Second.
Jackson, second. All those in favor of approving the special meeting agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So I want to read through this, so the election of council president. And first, any council member may be nominated for president. A council member may nominate himself or herself, no second is needed. After nominations are received, nominations will be closed. The vote will be called and ordered of nomination. When voting, the first to receive free vote will be elected council president. Council members can only vote once and may, and can vote for themselves. And I'll just make a note here, the election tonight, this individual will take, become council president on Monday evening. And so at this time, I will call for a motion and a second to accept the rules.
The move, second. So I have a question, I have a question.
Yes.
I, okay, so now that you're asleep, this is going to be. We have 30 days. Or five, 30.
30 days from September 11.
The 11th, okay, okay. So what if we, for you to wait until we go, to reorganize?
We didn't do that last one, but Jack came there, and they had started advertising for the seat, so I encouraged them to put their resumes in other dimensions in. I'm not saying any names, I'm just looking in the audience, that's District 2 resident.
Now, when that seat is filled, we reorganize? Or we can wait until the election?
Wait until the election. That's what we did in January, and I think that's the same, the same process should work for this.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying, I know people are looking in and asking for clarifying why we're not doing it that way.
And so, and I will, and I, I will vote on the rules when I call, after we vote on the rules. But just so everybody is clear, I, I will abstain from the vote for council president. So at this time, I will call for the vote on the rules. All those in favor of the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, and the chair votes aye. All right, so at this time, I will call for nominations for council president.
I would like to nominate April Jackson for council president.
If Ms. Jackson is nominated, assuming Ms. Jackson accepts the nomination. Are there any other nominations for council president? Hearing none, I will, I will close the nominations, call for the question. All those in favor of April Jackson to be the next Fallberry City Council President, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, and the chair abstains. Congratulations to Ms. Jackson. You will be the next Fallberry City Council President.
Thank you.
So with that, we will have a vacancy for vice president. So I will go through the same, read the same thing. She's going to, okay. Take my gavel. Take my coffee, take my phone.
I'll be able to bring us coffee at work.
It's not, no.
So we're doing the same thing? So we're doing the same thing for the vice president. Is there?
So, no, oh, yeah, so you just, I would just read this.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Okay. Any council member, I'm reading the rules. Any council member may be nominated for vice president. A council member may nominate himself or herself. No second is needed. After nominations are received, nominations will be closed. The vote will be called in order of nominations. When voting, the first to receive three votes will be elected council vice president. Council members can only vote once and can vote for themselves. I call for a nomination for vice president.
No, you need to vote on.
Oh, I need to vote on the rules. Okay, I apologize. Okay. Call for motion?
Remove. Second.
Michelle and Megan. Now I'm calling for the nomination, oh. Calling for nomination for council vice president.
I need to, I need to vote.
You need to vote. Call for the vote for the rules.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye, five. Okay? Now, can I call for the nomination for council vice president?
I'd like to nominate Angela Blake.
Would you accept the nomination? All in favor of Angela Blake becoming Fallsbury City Council vice president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose. And the chair abstains. And the vice, and the president votes aye. Those two. Angela, you are now nominated. Okay. And that's good. Yeah, come on. I want to use the mirrors. Y'all ready?